I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would ask our new Treasurer, John Scott, if you would please call the roll.
Mrs. Corpus?
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
Mr. Backs?
Here.
Ms. Croft?
Here.
Mr. Eley?
Here.
Thank you.
I would ask now if you will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome and thank you for coming out this evening to join us. I'd like to begin with our introductions. To my far right, we have Board Member Greg Alec. To my immediate right, we have Board Vice President Mike Gebhardt. To my left, Board Member Jim Backs. To his left, Board Member Ms. Annie Croft. We have our Superintendent, Dr. Jama. And we have a new face for you this evening. We have our Treasurer, John Scott. And I would ask you, if you, it's a tradition here with us, when we bring someone on board, we ask them to just say a few words, anything you'd like to tell us about it, about yourself, and introduce yourself to our viewing public, please.
I'm John Scott. I live in Seven Hills, Ohio. I've been married way too long.
Oh, okay.
Like forty-seven years.
I forgot to tell you, we don't edit, so.
I've done this job, this type of job, forty-seven years in the public sector. I'm still working on the east side of Cleveland as a consultant with Richmond High Schools. And I have worked with Tom in the past, and don't put that against me.
And I believe that was at clear view?
I was at clear view, yes.
Well, welcome, and thank you very much for stepping in. I understand you had an opportunity to meet with most of the staff today.
I met with my immediate staff members today.
And it's a great time to step in. We're in the midst of an audit, and we have a lot of nice things going on, so we really appreciate your leadership and your ability to step in. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's our routine audit that we do. At this time, we will begin with our presentations. We have a presentation by Ms. Schloss regarding what's new in our academic services for 2015, 2016.
This one we're going to share. Is this on? Yep, it is. Good evening, Board Members, and Dr. Jama and John. By the way, the title one was cleared today, so we're good to go.
I saw that.
I'm clean. All right. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Next to me is the Assistant Director of Academic Services, Ramona Mendek. And I have to start with the introduction of the team, because often, I'm up here speaking, but I, by no means would ever say that I do this alone. I have what I would call the A-Team behind me, and I couldn't ask for a better team. So I do want to introduce the team. As I said, this is Ramona Mendek, the Assistant Director. And then behind me, if they would stand, Cindy Tobal, who, we call her the new Charlie, but we're slowly moving, she's made a name. She was a teacher at Westwood, who is the new technology to curriculum specialist. Lisa Getty, who is the other implementation specialist, who works primarily with literacy. We have Amy Keer, who is a teaching and learning coordinator. Kathy Kep, who is the other teaching and learning coordinator. Michelle Bugah, who is our gifted services coordinator, who was also a teacher in the district, a gifted teacher in the district, and a regular ed teacher for years. So that is the team, and really, again, I could not do this without them, and they really make the job easy, and they, I think if you talk to any of the teachers or administrators, they put a lot of time and effort into doing what's best for children, so.
We have a lot of them, five minutes each to address us.
Yeah, of course, of course. So, just to start us off, let me see here, make sure this is still working. We'll go with that. All right. Thank you, Tom. I wanted to at least, I'm doing a presentation in a couple of weeks at Rotary to kind of give a full scale on what happened with our first year of the implementation for the New Beginnings Grant over at Stocker, but I wanted to just at least include one slide, because I think, as I presented this summer at, for the Stocker Board, this slide will give you a little taste of the impact just one year has made in the children's lives over at Franklin for the preschool pilot. We decided, because of the changing, ever-changing world of testing for the State Department, we decided to use one measure for the next few years, which was the CRAWL that just kind of left, the kindergarten literacy assessment that we stopped using last year. We decided to use that for this program, because we didn't want a different test every year. There was no way to compare. So we gave the, all the preschoolers at Franklin the CRAWL at the end of last year. Seventy-three percent of the four-year-olds met the requirements for ready for kindergarten out of those thirty-six students. Of the nine that were not ready, six of them were within two points, which was really exciting. And some of the students that also did not do as well were soon identified as having some disability or delay. So we felt really good about those results. The average score of the twenty-nine possible points was nineteen. Now, the year prior to that, it was sixteen for the kids going into kindergarten. So, right away, three points is a lot when you're talking about only twenty-nine possible. We also did an extra little piece, we used to call it the Alaria part of the CRAWL. Out of the possible one hundred and eleven, previously, the average score for Franklin was a sixty-nine. This past year of the preschool group was an eighty-eight. So I think you can see the impact of having these students in preschool for five hours a day in a program that we can govern and train the teachers and work with the staff, and I think we're going to see even better things to come. But that, for, the first year is excellent in the, by the way, Stocker was absolutely thrilled. Here are a few pictures. I had to show this. That's our graduating classes, so they all got superhero capes with their initial on it. But the really cool thing inside each of the capes, I will try to read it, says, "You are braver than you really," oh, gosh, here I go, I can't see it. I saw it. You want to read that for me, Dr. Jama?
I knew you were going to answer.
You are braver, you are stronger.
You are stronger, you are smarter, and I, and we love you more than you know. It was inside each of the students' capes. That's kind of paraphrased. But you can see, my favorite picture here is the one in the bottom right-hand corner of the mother and the son. That kind of spoke for what the whole ceremony was about and the effect that the program had. It was a huge success. But that took the whole staff as part of that, but just a little snippet there. So now we're going to begin on some of the programs we are implementing, and in the ever-changing world of the needs of the children. And when I say students, I want to clarify that this is all students, whether they're identified with a disability, or they are gifted, or in the regular ed track. When we talk about students throughout this, we mean all of them, so we're doing things to meet the needs. One program that we piloted with our ELL students last year, and we also met with teachers and administrators from Reynoldsburg, Hilliard, and Mentor, is a program called Achieve 3000, which is a language arts program that is based around daily differentiated online instruction of nonfiction reading and writing. The one reason we really were interested in this program was because it met the needs of each student at the level, at the lexile level that they are at. So it's very unusual to find a program that, number one, is online and the kids enjoy using, but that meets the students at their level and then stretches them. We saw some really nice gains with the ELL population, so we decided this year to put it in the four, five, and six classrooms, and what it is being delivered in the No New Teaching blocks, what many of them call the intervention or enrichment blocks. At the middle school, all sixth graders have what we call a lab, which is an extension of their language arts and math block, so a period every day. These students will be using Achieve 3000 as part of those blocks, and they have to do two activities a week to show growth, is what the researchers said. One of the teachers from Hilliard said he saw six-hundred percent growth in his class overall last year, which, to me, is amazing. But it wasn't just the growth of the lowest achievers. His gifted students were also growing. Because what it does is if you have, as each student is uniquely different and has a different skill set, it will give you the same information at your level, lexile level. And then, the neat thing about it is it will stretch you a little bit, because we never want to just always go for their instructional level. We want to also challenge to take them to that new level. The really cool thing about it is the kids love it, because there is a gaming component to it. And they get to earn badges and build avatars and all this unique stuff, so they are able to access that at home. And I looked, I think it was last night, and we had over four hundred logins after school already. And we're just starting the program in the last week on a regular basis. So we're really excited about this. We'll be able to see what's coming. There is a pre-K2 program coming from the same company that was developed by the guy that developed LeapFrog, and it's called Smarty Ants. And I want you to know I tested in at level seventy, so I did well. But I'm in the process of building my ant, and we're going to hopefully put that out soon. So, good things to come from that. Another thing you may hear out in the community, or from your own children in the district, is we are doing for the first time a K8 pilot of a new math program. In the past, we've had the K5 and then a 68. This is the first time we've had a K8 from the same company. It's called Envision 2.0, and the middle school is digits. We heard very loud and clear that our teachers want to get back to a units-based math program and not the spiraling program like your everyday math. Sometimes, they run their course, and we really felt that it did with the Common Core standards coming out. We have one teacher in each building at each grade level in K2. All of the three through eight math teachers, because they're departmentalized, are piloting it. Kathy is doing a great job of meeting consistently and collaborating with the teachers, and also putting into effect some parent nights of informing them and getting their feedback on the program, because we know that's an important part. The one really unique thing is it does have an accelerated track at seventh grade, and we are looking at even into bringing geometry down to the middle school, as some school districts have done, so that we can do an Algebra I at seventh and Geometry at eighth for those higher-functioning students. It is a hybrid program, both paper and pencil and technology. So again, students are able to utilize technology and do things that they like, you know, they learn very differently than we did at that age. Last year, we began the task of really looking at our writing program. Amy Keer, along with Dr. Lori Wilfong from Kent State University, who we've been working with over the last few years in different areas, but we are in our second year, I would call it our first full year, of the writing program implementation, K-12. With the Common Core standards and the new testing, writing is very different from what it was in past, the expectation of what types of writing they do. So we have put into place a K2 program called Lucy Cockens, and as you will hear me say over and over whenever I present is, we did a pilot. We feel very strongly that pilots are the way to go, because we get good feedback from our teachers to let us know whether the program will be successful within our district. So all K2 teachers are using Lucy Cockens. And our 3-8 program, we wrote ourselves with Dr. Wilfong. And she actually even wrote a book and used us kind of as her test group, so to speak. What we did is we wrote it around the same concept of the Writers Workshop and Units of Study that Lucy Cockens is, and Amy and the teachers and Dr. Wilfong worked together to produce a very rigorous writing program, but one that supports our curricular maps. The neat thing that we always do with these implementations is we have a coaching element to it. We don't believe in training and saying adios. We believe in training and going in and supporting and making sure that the teachers have what they need, because we know that will have a direct effect on the student and how they will do. So more and more times, you will see coaching as part of those implementations. The next part of our department that is growing like crazy is Alaria University. This is something that has become a whole department kind of team effort, but Cindy is kind of heading it up, as Charlie did. This year, we have some new courses that we've added to our queue, and we have Maria Gilmore and Julio Rivera that are doing English Language Learners in the classroom. And I have even gotten calls from the LOU department down at ODE saying how impressed they are with our two T-Soul teachers and how they're taking it to the next level. So we're excited about that. They're going to be working with teachers in how to deal with ELL students within the regular classroom. New Teacher Survival Class that Lisa is teaching to help, we had fifty-eight new teachers this year, so she has a nice little group of teachers to, kind of just to be supportive to them. Google Drive 2.0, which Charlie is teaching from central Ohio. It's the advanced level, so he's doing that on a purchase service basis for us and taking it to the next level. A couple of new workshops, as you've heard, we've made Chromebook purchases, and they are taking off like crazy. I'm sure Brian Kokai will have to do a report soon, because he's having to, I guess they make, get us a bigger pipe? Is that what we call it, Brian?
Sure.
To Time Warner. All right. We need more capacity, so I think he was going to quadruple it. Yeah, I walked into that one. I know it. All on my own. But our teachers are loving it. If they come to a training, we give them a Chromebook, because we really believe in they should have the tools they need to teach. So they are using the Chromebooks, and from what I hear, arguing over whose turn it is, and it's, that's good stuff. That's a good problem to have. So also, we're doing more and more with developing differentiation, and again, meeting the needs of all of our students. One thing that we want to make sure doesn't happen is that we don't meet the needs wherever they're at. So those are some new offerings. We had over three hundred teachers take courses this past summer during their summer break with some of our courses that we've offered. And I think that when you're talking, we only have five hundred teachers. That's remarkable. And kudos to them for extending their learning each year. One other piece that is expanding this year is our Arts Inspired Learning in the classroom. As you know, that was a huge part of the Franklin New Beginnings Grant, but one thing I told you when I presented that was that we wanted other buildings to have experiences, and it's our hope to have every building have these experiences. So Oakwood, I'm meeting with their staff tomorrow, they, every grade level will have a residency at Oakwood next year through the Center for Arts Inspired Learning, which has, we were able to secure NORD funding and were able to get that paid for. We are also putting kindergarten Center for Arts Inspired Learning course experience in every single kindergarten room this year, again. Crestwood is working on a grant from the Cleveland Playhouse, where they have resident actors come in and help role model the curriculum they're learning. That went very well last year, and it's up and running again this year. There's only two districts getting that. Alaria High has two residencies, one with Great Lakes Theater, that's been around for quite some time, and Shakespeare, and one with the drama courses, improvisational residency. I think I'm going to take that one in this year, because I heard it's really neat. So as you can see, we are expanding our arts programming. We know that it's an important piece to the students' education. We feel very strongly about the fine arts, and hopefully, next year, there'll be even more. And Ramona's going to take it from here.
Okay, so I'm going to give a little bit of information of what's new with our gifted service plan, our gifted program in Alaria. At this time, we have a little over six hundred and fifty students who are identified. They're identified through testing. They're referred either by their parent, a teacher, and we run, and we do some tests on them to identify. They have to hit certain numbers, and if they hit that, they're identified in certain areas. The services, one of the things that we're really focusing on is that differentiation instruction. In K3, it is being supported by our new gifted intervention specialist, Laura Barkdahl. And she goes into the classrooms and she is a, she gives guidance, she offers resources, helps that teacher to meet the needs of the child that's in their classroom, helps stretch them. In fourth through fifth, that's a continuation of the service that we've had in place for years, and that is a cluster group with GIS. They go into the language arts and math class, and they are co-teaching with that general ed teacher. In sixth through eighth grade, there are honor classes in language arts, math, social studies, and science. Those are based on their academics in their, in the elementary years and teacher recommendations. And in ninth through twelfth are their advanced placements and the College Credit Plus, which is previously known as PSEO. We're increasing that formalized subject and grade level acceleration. We're really trying to look at kids who are performing above their levels, and if they're recommended and referred, we look in, we test, and we see if they fit that subject acceleration or a whole grade acceleration. And then we have many opportunities for our staff for HQPD, which is Highly Qualified Professional Development. That is through Alaria University. It's one-on-one sessions they can have. They can go and meet as a group, a grade-level group. Schoology is also something that's supporting that HQPD. The next thing that is new, and we're actually very excited about it, but we're still learning a lot about this program, is the college and career advising. We recently hired Elizabeth Trump as our college and career counselor. She will be servicing grades sixth through twelfth grade. And her plan is to really help the children, guide them into either a career path or a college path, setting up success plans with them, using the Ohio Means Jobs website to help set that path up for them. That website offers them an opportunity to look at interest inventories. They can search careers and really get an idea of what path they want to follow, and then it gives them direction on what they need to do next. You know, what kind of classes you need to take, what kind of things you need to start looking at to prepare for that career. So she is just starting this year, and she's running with it, and she's done a great job. A lot of great ideas are coming out. There's a lot of conversations that, of things that we want to put in place and pursue. And then at the high school, there is a college credit, the College Credit Plus program. There's a thirty-hour track, so there are actual courses available at Alaria High School that students can take on campus instead of having to go to LCC if that's not possible, and where they can take college classes and get college credit for them. And last but not least, statewide testing, which we know has changed a great deal. I could say, as the coordinator of that, I'm very happy for the changes. It is one test vendor, it's more user-friendly for staff and administrators as we're trying to administer this to students. That is, we call it AR testing. It's American Institute for Research, and it just, it meets the needs that we need, and it's easier to maintain and handle with the kids. Last year, we had a very good success. We had no issues with that testing whatsoever, so that will now be language arts, math, social studies, and science tests available through them. We now have one testing window, where last year we had two. That testing window will fall April and May. And we still have the opportunity of choice of paper or pencil. Last year, we had a lot of success with the online, I'm sorry, online and paper. We had a lot of success with the online, so we will continue and do the majority online, because the kids really, they liked that a whole lot better than the paper pencil side.
Just one addition to the statewide testing, and we talked about this at Cabinet this morning. The state is really trying to make it better, so to speak, and I think one of the leaders, and that is Peggy Lanier from the Dayton area. And right now, teachers are going down on and off, and they're, they're writing the new tests for language arts and for math, and that's the way it should be. So I really do think that they've listened to the parents and to the educators, and I think it's going to be a much more successful process this year. So we encourage parents, if they have questions, to call us about that, but basically, that's all that's new in academic services this year. It's a lot. It might not sound that way, but we're off and running and having a great start. If you have any questions, we're more than welcome to feed that, or field them. Long day.
Which Rotary Club are you going to be at?
Yours.
Okay, great. When is that?
The thirteenth of October. They called in Mark, I think is his name, talked to Dr. Jama, and wanted to hear the success of the first year. So do the same presentation we did for the Stocker Board.
Okay, look forward to it. Very, very good.
That would be the Noon Rotary Club, right?
Yes, the noon.
Just make sure we get that straight.
Yes, the Noon Rotary Club. The Rotary.
The Rotary.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you to the entire team that you have back there for the great job that you do, and thank you to Ann for her leadership and her professionalism, and Ann, that's something, the connections that you have been able to make, and the impression that you've made on those, to be able not only bring into the resources, but to be able to be a consultant and to have them working with you on all levels. Thank you, and to your really dedicated and high-performing staff that you have there that get it done, and it's something that we're always proud when you bring to show us, to be able to let the people know about what we have to offer. We're proud of it, because of the work you do. Thank you.
Very good. Nice job.
Thank you.
Great job. Very good. And this place on our agenda is set aside for our visitors' comments. We always encourage citizens to, and we appreciate their interest in the board meetings and their attendance at the board meetings. Normally, the board meets twice during the month, and you've heard our schedule for the coming year, where our first meeting of the month is a roadshow. And Dr. Jama, we will be, I believe someplace you know, when we're heading to Northwood for our next meeting. We'd like you to be aware of that. But on the night of the meeting, if you sign up to address the board, we ask that you sign in with your name, your address, and the topic you wish to address the board. And if you need longer than five minutes, if you contact the Treasurer's Office one week in advance of our meeting, you can be given up to fifteen minutes to present to the board. So I encourage you to do that, and continue to, we appreciate your interest in our meetings and the things that go on in the school district. This place on our agenda is set aside for our board member discussion items. Board, are there any items that you'd like to bring before the board tonight?
None at this time.
Nope.
No. Hearing none, I will move to the meeting minutes and entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education Record of Proceedings for the meetings of August 25th and September 2nd. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gebhardt and a second by Ms. Croft. Would you please call the roll? I'm sorry, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mr. Eley?
Aye.
Mrs. Corpus?
Aye. Motion carries. Our treasurer action items, we would ask Mr. Scott.
Item one, recommended action to accept the financial report for the month of August 2015, which includes all bank reconciliations, investment reports, cash balance reports, and appropriation slash expense reports as detailed in closure of G1. Item two, recommended action to acknowledge and express appreciation and accept the following gifts and donations. One from the Community Christ Church in La Grange, Ohio, has presented a donation of school supplies valued at $300 to the Westwood Middle School. The donation will be used for students' education use. Also from the Delta Dental of Ohio. Also from the Delta Dental of Ohio, from Cleveland, Ohio, has presented a donation of 27 book bags with school supplies valued at $665 to the communication office at the administration building. The donation will be used for students in need throughout the district. Also Peggy Russler from Amherst, Ohio, has presented a donation of three Alirian yearbooks from the years 1939, 1940, 1941, the value at $125 to the superintendent's office at the administration building. The donation will be used in Aliria schools' archives. Lastly, a Lewin County Partnership of HR Block United Way Educational Service Center has presented a donation of four boxes of school supplies valued at approximately $150 to Prospect Elementary. The donation will be used for students' need. Item three, recommended action to approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures as detailed in enclosure G3. Item four, recommended, recommended action to authorize the treasurer to advance and transfer funds from the general fund to the following fund accounts as detailed in enclosure G4. Item five, approve a purchase order, recommended action to approve a purchase order for the treasurer of the state of Ohio in the amount of $30,000 for auditing services rendered in connection with examination of Aliria City School District for the year ending June 30th, 2015. Item six, I would recommend that you approve items one through six.
One, one through five?
I'm sorry, one through five.
Thank you, thank you. I have a recommendation from the treasurer and I would entertain a motion to approve the recommended items one through five as presented by the treasurer.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gebhardt and a second by Mr. Bax. Just a couple of items and looking at, we have been kind of continuing throughout as the school year has started, accepting and recognizing the donations of school supplies. And that's something that we would ask our viewing public to keep in mind, that if they're, they see that there is a need, that we have some very, some people that are very generous and some organizations very generous that want to make sure that those needs are met. I know our teachers and all of our instructional staff does a great job with recommending and seeing, making sure that people have what they need, but also to keep in mind that the, the communications office, that if it's a parent or a caregiver out there, you can always call also and get in touch with the communication office. And there are a lot of items that have been donated and they want to see them get into the hands of those that can use them. So keep that in mind. And the other item is the yearbooks. I know we have a really great collection there in our archives, but we could always use, there are people who contact us and are interested in looking things up and in wanting information from that. The Alumni Association uses those as well. They're a very helpful thing to have and to be able to complete our archives. So keep in mind that that's something, sometimes they come into the possession of, they're handed down and they're not exactly sure what to do with that. And this is a great way to donate it and to get credit for that donation and also to make a difference, to help us to complete the archives and to have resources when people contact us and are looking for some things, some nostalgic things, some historic things. And particularly when they have their reunions, they're looking for some of that and they will come to us. So keep that in mind if you have the opportunity to do that.
Absolutely.
Or does any other comments or?
I just have a question on the purchase order for the audit. Is that, is that a flat fee audit that, you're probably, I'm not so sure if you know that.
Normally it's a flat fee.
Okay.
They normally do not, unless there's something going on or something, that price stays the same.
Is that the price for the whole audit or is that just the progress bill?
It's for the whole audit.
Okay, all right. Good, okay.
Thank you.
I had a question, Mark.
Okay, I think your question was answered, Ms. Croft.
Yeah, I just had a question, Mark.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Carpus?
Aye. Motion carries. Treasurer Other, do you have additional items for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Item one, the permanent appropriations. I would like to recommend to approve the permanent appropriations for the fiscal year 2015-2016 as detailed in enclosure H1. As you know, these were prepared by the prior treasurer, but if there's questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Elick, seconded by Mr. Gebhardt. Are there any questions or comments on? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mrs. Carpus?
Aye. Motion carries. Treasurer Report, do you have anything to bring before us or share with us this evening?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Superintendent Actions, Dr. Jama.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, this time I would like to recommend the following items for the board's approval. To approve the payment of stipends as listed below, $27.64 per hour not to exceed 15 hours to the following Aliria High School teachers for their participation in the Fall OGT tutoring program. This stipend will be supported by the general fund. And just to give you a little history on this, this goes back several years, I believe my first year at Aliria High School. One of the things we have found out over the years as, working with students right before they take the test, that giving them some, some buildup reminders, some personal touches right before they take the test has really shown success. And I'm proud to say I know over the years, the percentage of students who have taken the tutoring, and what's nice is it's free of charge to our students, our staff and our districts providing this for our kids who are in need, have, have done extremely well when they have taken the test. And I kind of look back wishing I did more of a in-depth study on it, but I'm guessing the percentages are in the high eighties and early, low nineties as far as students being successful after having the tutoring sessions. So it has worked out really well. Worked out back when we started at a Clearview and continued on at the high school. Let's see here. To approve payment of the stipends as listed below, hourly amount as listed not to exceed three hours for medication training for the following personal attendant. This will be funded through IDEA, Part B and the general fund. Again, this is for the gentleman who is a new personal attendant who needs to have this required training by law. Hourly amounts as listed not to exceed 21 hours for therapeutic crisis training for the following paraprofessionals. This will be funded with IDEA, Part B and general fund monies to the individuals listed below. And I'll finish the next recommendation and then I'll explain TCI real quickly. $100 stipend per day for TCI training not to exceed three days for the following certified teacher. This will be funded with IDEA, Part B and general funds as well. And just to give you a quick synopsis of TCI, it stands for therapeutic crisis intervention. And it's a program which we give our staff members for several phases. One, it's a proactive approach when dealing with students. And it presents crises from actually happening before they happen. It teaches de-escalation and working with students who are, who are in need of that type of training. It de-escalates potential crises from even happening within the classroom and within the district. And then the big piece, as well as when something does happen, it provides the staff member with effective training on how to handle the crisis when it does occur at that moment. So very, 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 it's very much needed and it's a great training program to have. Item three, excess cost contracts for non-resident child with a disability. To authorize the contracts for the 15-16 school year for the Aliria City Schools to provide special education services for a non-resident student, these services are contracted due to open enrollment, court placement, parental institutional placement or cooperative agreements. The school districts are Akron City, Avon, Avon Lake, Clearview, Cleveland Metropolitan, Dawson Bryant, Fremont City, Garfield Heights City, Lorain City, Maslin City, North Ridgeville City, Midview Local, Orange City, Sheffield Sheffield Lake City Schools, Springfield Local Schools, Warrensville Heights City Schools and Western Local Schools. And again, this is a mutual contract between the two districts to pick up the excess costs on students who are placed in their district or in our district for reasons as deemed in the resolution. Number four, approval of continuation of the 14-15 Maxim Healthcare Contract. To approve the automatic continuation as per Section 111 of the contract for Maxim Healthcare Services for the 15-16 school year. And again, these are healthcare providers that we bring into the district to work with our students who have exceptional disabilities and need that one-on-one care. Item five, approval of purchase orders for academic services. To approve the purchase order for Center for Arts Inspired Learning, and we're excited to see what Ann presented tonight with the many things that are taking place through academic services, for programming for the elementary schools. This is not to exceed $47,000. This purchase order will be supported by the Stocker Grant, Title I Grant and General Fund. Again, it's to provide all those extra opportunities for our kids in the classrooms at the elementary level. Item six, approval of out-of-state field trip through academic services. To approve the out-of-state field trip for Windsor Elementary School Autism Unit, and this is pretty exciting, students to attend Camp Fitch YMCA in North Springfield, Pennsylvania. This is not going to be an overnight trip, but it's going to be a specialized trip to work with students who have autism where they are able to participate as well with their classmates, but it will be for a day. Part of the transportation, part of the opportunities that they will have at Camp Fitch will build that team atmosphere. Item seven, sponsor application. To authorize sponsor application approved by the state of Ohio for the Aliria City School District to offer national school lunch program, school breakfast program and after-school care snack program and government, governmental donated food programs for the 15-16 school year. Item eight, the purchase of an F-450 to authorize the purchase of one F-450 dump plow truck from Nick Abraham 111 East Broad Street in Aliria at a total cost of $56,128.12. Purchase under State of Ohio Term Pricing Agreement, which has already been competitively bid, which therefore do not require bidding by the Aliria City School District. Again, this dump truck is going to be utilized for hopefully not a lot of snow plowing this winter, but to take care of our property as our maintenance staff has done so, so greatly over the last several months in getting the buildings up to shape for the start of the school year. Very proud of them. And also I'm proud to say that the trucks be in purchase from one of our local businesses as well. And with that, Madam President, that concludes my recommendations for your approval.
I would entertain a motion to approve the items as recommended and presented by the superintendent.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Croft.
Seconded by Mr. Gebhardt. Are there any questions or comments on the items as presented? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mrs. Carpus?
Aye. Motion carries. Superintendent Other this evening?
Madam President, I do not have any items under Superintendent Other.
Okay, thank you. Personnel items recommended by our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have several items under Personnel Action this evening for your approval. To approve the retirement of certified staff member as detailed below, Diane Teich, who is an intervention specialist, will be retiring effective 6/3/2016. So she will be leaving us at the end of the school year. Item two, resignation. To approve the resignation of the following certified staff member as detailed below, Heather Janetti, who is an auxiliary tutor at St. Jude's effective 9/4/2015. And to appoint the certified staff members, to approve the appointment of the certified staff members as detailed below. And as you look through the list of the items presented to you, you have substitute teachers, you have mentor teachers, as well as extracurricular and extended-time staff members presented. Something I just want to bring to your attention, you'll notice the second staff member under name is Roger Dow. He actually started on September 15th due to a situation that occurred at Prospect with a special class. We're very lucky to get Roger Dow. He's a retired Aliria High School school teacher with many experiences in the emotional disturbed unit. So he is coming on board to help us out with a, a situation that led to a, a opening for a short period of time. You'll also notice, and this goes along with what Ann had presented earlier today with the new teachers taking advantage of the boot camp for the new teachers. With new teachers come many teachers who need to support those new teachers. And as you could see with the list where it says mentor teacher, I don't remember ever having a list that big. Do you, Ann?
No, we have 14. Yeah, well, we have 25 altogether.
Is that what it is, Teresa?
14 new ones, yeah.
Yeah. So a tremendous amount of experience there, working with our new teachers and getting them started on track. So it's very exciting. Item four, to approve the Unpaid Medical and Family Leave Act. To approve the unpaid medical and family leave of the following certified staff member as detailed below, Renee Frederick, we're very sorry to, to say that she recently lost her, her husband. And our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family as she goes through and her family goes through a very difficult time. Item five, appointment of classified staff. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff member as detailed below, Don Wendell, instructional paraprofessional at Franklin, Courtney Capers to the receptionist position at Aliria High School, John Clayton to the educational transition paraprofessional at Prospect, Patty Ballwender, additional position, substitute personal attendant, as well as Elizabeth Patterson. Under item six, athletic supplemental of classified employees. To approve the athletic supplementals of the following classified employee as detailed below, Jackie Bealow, head seventh grade basketball coach. Next, item seven, athletic supplementals for non-employees. To approve the athletic supplementals of the following non-employees as detailed below. And item eight, to approve the following employees and non-employees as game workers for their athletic services as detailed below. And with that, Madam President, that concludes my recommendations for your approval and the board's approval this evening.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel items as recommended as presented?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Elick. Seconded by Ms. Croft. Are there any questions or comments? I believe I see someone here this evening that is a...
Absolutely, Madam President. I, as going along with my promise to the community and working with our administrative team to bring on Aliria graduates and residents of the city of Aliria to be employed by this incredible district, I'm proud to present to you tonight Courtney Capers, who is an Aliria High School graduate, now will be working at her alma mater. Welcome aboard. I want to make sure I got, is it, you graduated in '08, correct, the year after Patrick did? Was that?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's what I thought. Awesome.
Courtney, if you'd like to come and take the mic, you're welcome to say a word. Sure, sure. Tell us a little bit about you. We always so pleased to have our students think enough about us to want to become a part of the family of the, that works here at the district. We really appreciate that and we'd like to, anything you'd like to tell us about yourself, please?
Okay. Thank you. I'm just honored to have been offered the position at Aliria High School. And I'm just looking forward to a successful year, just working alongside such wonderful educators. And they've just made me feel at home so far. So like I said, I'm just looking forward to it. So thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
So proud of you. She's running, Greg. She's running away from the line.
Okay, I don't blame her.
You have to do the line.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome.
Congratulations.
What's that? I'm sorry.
You didn't recognize it.
I didn't recognize the name.
Well, we've already... Well, we've already, we've already found out you blush.
Welcome, Tom Scott.
Yeah, well.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Carpus?
Aye. Motion carries. And I forgot to tell you, never let them see you blush. Then it becomes something that they can work toward accomplishing.
Too late, too late.
Too late, too late. Do you have any other personnel items for us this evening?
Madam President, I do not have any further items under Personnel for your consideration.
Hearing none, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do, thank you, Madam President and members of the Board. First of all, John, welcome aboard tonight. Very glad to have you on, on staff. I know we have worked together in the past, and I'm truly feel lucky to have you onboard again, and I just want to thank you for taking the opportunity to work with us here in the Elyria City School District. Thank you very much.
Don't cry.
And, what's that?
Don't cry.
No, I won't cry. I won't. Several things, first of all, to academic services, what an awesome job, what an awesome job that's taken place in your department and with your staff. And I'll tell you, being in Elyria now for many, many years as an employee, and also as a parent who had students go through the district, I knew many things were going on in the district that were, that were positive and exciting and new in the classrooms, but being in this position over the last, it's almost gone on two months now, has led to me getting into the classrooms a lot and seeing what's actually taking place in the elementary schools, the middle schools, and obviously the high school as well. And I could absolutely attest to what academic services spoke about tonight. There are incredible things taking places in the classrooms, from the kindergarten through the primary, to the intermediate, to the middle, and to the high schools. There's a great deal of learning taking place, relationships are being built, and our teachers are doing one heck of a great job throughout the district, and that's just coming from me going into these buildings and into the classrooms over the last eight weeks. It has confirmed everything that I thought and more. So, kudos to your department and to the teachers and all the staff members who have done a remarkable job in the district, from the Maintenance Department, Food Service, to busing, and obviously to the teaching staff as well. Thank you for a job well done. Since we were at Ely, it's kind of neat, Ely has been in the paper a couple times since we had our board meeting there with their Bring Your Own Device, and they had the great bully, anti-bullying program there that took place this week, so they're getting some good headline news. I emailed Dr. Debe and told him to keep up the great job. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to speak to Amy, and I went to the Senior Fellowship at the Moose Club, correct, Amy? They're not Moose Club members, I was told that, definitely, but they are the Senior Fellow Membership who goes there on a weekly basis to meet, and had an opportunity to talk to 75 to 80 gentlemen who had a large interest in the Elyria City Schools, and it was kind of exciting to get to speak to them about the many exciting programs that are taking place. Took several questions from them, and their questions were very direct, and it was an awesome, awesome opportunity to get out into the community and to talk to them. Just a reminder that tomorrow night, there is that movie taking place at Laurent County Community College, that I have an opportunity to sit on the panel with the Superintendent from Avon to discuss with the guest, the movie following its preview. And something else, I'm very proud of, Matt Jablonsky, one of our teachers at Elyria High School, is also a parent within the district, will be sitting on the panel as well to address the audience. So they're going to get hit double with pioneer spirit tomorrow night at
Well represented.
At that college, absolutely. And finally, this past week, Amy and I had an opportunity as well to interview at WOBL, and Amy, I keep forgetting the other initials of that, right? WDLW. We had an opportunity to both be interviewed about the Elyria City Schools, and we got to share that information that I just shared with you about all the great things taking place to the entire community. So it's, it's been very positive, been very rewarding, and again, just seeing what's taking place out there is something to see. So with that, Madam President, I have no other reports this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Dr. Jama? Hearing none, under Board of Education Reports, do I have any reports this evening?
No. No reports, but congratulations to the Elyria High Football Team, 3-0. Keep up the good work.
Talking again about being well represented out there with our athletes as well and such.
Our soccer, our boy soccer team yesterday did very well, too, was at the game against Keystone, and that was a personal win there, too, because one of my close friends is the Superintendent at Keystone, so he owes me lunch.
Do you have any kind of bet? Oh, lunch.
Lunch, lunch.
Lunch, okay.
Lunch, sure.
That's what I can say here.
Well, and we as well would like to join you in thanking Dr. Debe for hosting. It was really a great opportunity to be there, and we want to thank the staff that came out, and not only the presentation that they gave us on Bring Your Own Device, but also being there to support as we were, had voting on a hiring that evening, and they're there to support their fellow staff member. And I also would like to recognize Ms. Higgins and Marty Yaden for the job, a wonderful video of Dr. Debe took us on a tour, a video tour, and it's really, we look forward to continuing to seeing those, to have people to have an opportunity, often during the school day or at visitations in the evening, you don't really see all of the different areas in a building, and he did a great job of presenting that and presenting the opportunities there in the building, so people have a better idea, even those that possibly no longer have school-aged children. It's good for them to see what we offer and what we do in the district, so please extend our thanks to him, and we want to thank, thank you for that video, and hope that people will continue to look at that and to get a better idea of the successes and of the, what we offer here, the excellence. We are excellent at what we do because of the people that are involved, and not only their dedication, but their professionalism, and their always continuing to bring us new things. We saw tonight with academic services, we're always on top. That's good to know. We're always on top. We don't, we're proactive, not reactive. That's a very, very important thing to say about a district, so thank you. Anything else to be forced this evening?
Just one quick question, I have my mentors in the audience tonight, just thumbs up, Mr. Rigdah. All right, that's what I want to hear. All right, just.
Well, yeah, I just thought possibly that the car just kind of came here this evening. It was Wednesday evening, and you pull in and then realize, yes, you just bring yourself here, bring yourself here. Well, thank you, thank you for joining us, and absolutely, as that, as you, they would say, I think, give him his proper's as your mentor, and we thank you, and thank you for still your continued interest in all that you're doing to help the district, still continuing to do that. Thank you. Is there anything else before the Board this evening? We have no matters for executive session. Is there anything else to come before the Board this evening? Hearing nothing, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Elick, seconded by Mr. Gebhardt. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Ms. Carpus?
Motion carries, yes, yes. Motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you for joining us.
Great.